dictate that. So for the brick, your existing brick can be stained, so we don't have to rip it off and replace it. It's a very good way to do that. That's a commercial stain. We have projects that have had it for over 20 years. You'd never know the difference. But we are also hoping to change like the white aluminum siding that's there, all the gutters downspouse, rip off the shingles, do a new metal roof hopefully. Might have a base bid shingle alternate from metal like we did on some of the high school buildings. But hopefully tie the entire building together on the exterior, replace your old windows with new to match the new, you know, all those sorts of things. Little closer view of the entry, Nav Plaza. So the main portion of this addition is all hip roof design, but a gable at the entry, trying to help show off that entry, give you a chance for some signage and some branding like we're doing in other buildings. These windows here are in the offices, the new offices. You'll see a little bit different window design when we get to the boardroom. This would be the view from that parking lot or from the walk that extends south to the high school. So kind of right up into the new front door and then with the existing building behind. Same light pole, small detail, same design of things that we're doing on the rest of the high school campus, so that'll tie it together. This view is from the existing parking lot, so from the west. I mentioned we're going to renovate and extend this lot a little bit. So this would be the view coming out. Still see the sign and the flag and I think the gable helps to draw your attention to the new front door if you're coming this way. The existing entries, like the Dr. Schaefer's office, those will still stay. Can be used for staff, but we want to make sure that people know this is now the front door and this is where you go if you're a visitor. This is from the east looking west, so this is the boardroom. You'll see interior images here in a minute that show you what these windows do and what it looks like inside. When we get to the new front door and then heading around the building to the east, the windows are a little larger, almost to the floor, a little taller, just a different style to help draw attention to the boardroom. It is a commercial building, it's not a house, you know, those sorts of things, so we just increase the glass a little bit. Lots of daylight for training purposes and the lobby, I think that will be, you know, very nice inside. All right, so now we're going to walk inside. So this is inside the vestibule, coming right into the lobby. So the boardroom is here to the right, reception desk here. You'll see a couple of wood features that are similar to what we've done at the high school. We're not copying it, but we're tying things together a little bit. This is done in a little different way. This wall has a vinyl wall covering, just to dress it up a little bit, just a touch, and then just a little bit of wood trim. So that as you're coming in, you know, that would be a really nice spot for pictures, board pictures or students of the month. Set a couple of flags, you know, on either side. And then the boardroom. And then this is a closer view of the desk and that wood wall, again, a great spot for signage or something like that behind the desk. Couple of TVs in the lobby. We talked about possibly, you know, streaming a board meeting in the lobby if you ever need that, you know, more people, more space. So that would allow that. And then starting to look back toward the front door. So there's the front door, the glass entry, secure vestibule design, very similar to what we've done at your other buildings as you come in. I mentioned the two doors. So this door that you see there is the one security door that goes into the staff hallway and then you can see the second, that's the pair. You see one of the two doors in the view, that's the other door that would go back into the office. And this is that wall I mentioned going straight into the boardroom, so you can kind of see a nice spot for signage. Taller interior glass, kind of the same thing, opening up into the boardroom, you know, into that bigger space. And then the boardroom, I mentioned the built-in desk, so everybody's at the front, but it just lays out a little differently than you are now because it's the longer wall of the room. I mentioned the taller glass, larger windows in this space. All of that would have roller blinds and things you could control it for meetings or training sessions, for anything you need. But everybody's at the desk, including Penny and Bill. Instead of this scenario, we have a smaller kind of step down on each side to have everybody at one table, do the tech, you know, do things you need to do. But the floor has the presence in the middle with this wood ceiling in the upper part of the desk to kind of put the focus where it needs to be. And then you see, of course, you'll see screens and all these views around the room for training function, training purposes and also for board meetings. For training, we have a screen that's recessed into this wood ceiling that can drop down with a short throw projector right above it, so you don't see any of that, but it drops down when you need it. The screens around the room can be used as well. The seating layout you see here is similar to that floor plan with 84 seats set up for a board meeting. That screen will drop down when you need it. And looking the opposite way, so if you're at your board desk looking, you'll be looking west, another large screen with another short throw projector in the back of the room and then additional screens all the way around, so you can see the presentation.
So three screens that are always present and one that drops down, is that right?
Currently, there are, pardon me, hold on, Bill, three fixed like TV screens on the walls and two projection screens depending on how you use them.
Okay.
Three screens, one projector would always be on. The one behind the board would be the one that would, that would be up during the board meeting. The purpose of that's more for training.
But the, for the people in the room, it's the two?
Yes. Sort of like how we are now.
Okay. So we're through the images. We can go back if you want to see anything. As far as the estimate goes and the alternates, I think the base bid building addition with the site, the base bid site work to support it's about 3.8. And that's why I mentioned a series of alternates to try to give you the rest of the building renovation. So exterior renovations, I mentioned roofing, siding, windows, masonry staining. There's a series of interior renovations. The office space that has to be created is where we cut through the conference room now, obviously in tightening the existing, the new building that has to be done. The rest, there's a lot of wish list items that we're going to have as a series of alternates so that hopefully you have options on bid day, with the goal being to fully renovate. Talking sound control on offices, renovating the existing old restrooms that are in there, those sorts of things throughout the building. Existing, the two furnaces that you have, I know one of them is definitely, definitely needs to be replaced, so we're trying to get all that done, but just being cautious with the budget and trying to get as much as you can.
The generator that's there will handle all the new space?
It won't, new generator.
New generator.
Which is base bid.
Which, so that's in, coming out of some other fund?
It's in the base, the new, the new one's in the base bid.
Okay.
It's included.
Part of the 3.8.
Yep. Yep. And then the new parking lot, the 53 or four spots that I mentioned, I think it's about half a million. The sidewalk that connects to the south is base bid, so that you still could walk around campus and get there on an ADA compliance safe path.
So the flat bowl area, everything south of that is part of a base bid to the?
Just not the parking lot.
Just not the parking.
Yep, the sidewalk. If you have to get a person to walk from the high school there safely, that's included.
Okay.
And if you had to park at the high school lot that's there now, if we couldn't do the additional lot, then you could still walk there safely. So that's the summary of the estimate and alternates. And then as far as timeline goes, we're looking to receive bids in October to try to start construction the beginning of November of this year, going through the end of '26. So I think in a simple, in a simple phasing plan, it's build the addition and do that site work and then renovate the rest of the building. Because it's a full building, so you need to move some people to do the renovations, just like we move students around to do the building renovations, so.
So with the addition of the new space, do you also have to increase the size of the water line coming from the main to the building?
You've already done that. You had to do that last year on the high school, so that the line coming into the building from the exterior is two inch, that's large enough, but as soon as it touches the building, everything inside, then we have to replace for the new restrooms.
What size meter are we putting in?
I don't know the size of the meter, but it's a two inch line.
Okay. Because that was kind of a conversation here recently regarding transportation facility in terms of, you go ahead, miscommunication as I understood it. You can put in whatever size line you want in the ground, but once you get in the meter, you can downsize the size of the meter and save us quite a bit of money.
Okay. Yeah, I can, I can follow up with the size of the meter. I don't know that we haven't designed yet, we're not.
I don't know, but.
Fully finished with the design.
Did you have to get a meter when you did that, when you tied into the?
What's that?
When you tied into the water line coming up? Did you reroute it the water? The water used to come from the high school too to the admin.
Yeah, yeah. That was, as Adam mentioned, that was upgraded, that pipe went to a two inch at that time. The difference in the transportation, what caused the confusion was because four inch pipe was available and less expensive. There were four inch on the outside, but they didn't need that larger size on the inside, so that was three inch. So they needed a meter at three inch, which was on the plans and design. It just, I don't know if they got verbally communicated or what, but that's where the confusion was. In this case, we've got two inch coming in, that's kind of standard size coming in. I think you were yet to determine whether you need two inch or something smaller on the inside as I understand it.
Yeah, and what they did, they tied on to your old line on the exterior of the building. So the current setup is the two inch underground outside connects to the old smaller line, so we'll pick it up there outside and then transition. And if we have to drop it from two, we will. Inside, I just don't have an answer right now.
All I'm asking is, we avoid the fiasco of the transportation facility and perhaps even resolve it, perhaps more, but it just seems like we have a miscommunication as to what size water meter we have or need to run the water in the building. So transportation, you've got a couple bathrooms, you've got a bus wash, you have sprinkler system.
Correct.
Again, having been in front of this plumber for a period of time, I understand that you can put whatever size line you want in, but what's driving the cost in terms of permanent stuff becomes the size of the meter.
Sure. And I, yeah, I can confirm that. I don't know if we have that designed yet, since we're not done with this one, but yeah, I can definitely confirm.
And if, the answer is as well, we're also going to prepare for the future, I'd like to see the cost analysis of what we're actually, how long it's going to take us to use what we got before we see that savings.
On your design, the mechanical room, it looked like there were only doors leading to the exterior, is that correct?
Currently, yes.
Is that intentional?
Yes. You're going to need exterior doors that's in there. You could have something into the boardroom if you would like, but from a purely mechanical standpoint and equipment standpoint, it's nice to have them from the exterior, so that is kind of your call on the rest.
Just again, if they needed to get in there to work on something and there's a foot of snow on the ground, they would have probably appreciated if we had given them another alternative option to get in there.
Yeah, and you see the large storeroom too, which does have a tech rack to support this room. Not to say we couldn't do something through that wall, so you don't have another door directly into the boardroom. That's a good question, yeah, I'll give Richard's opinion on that for sure. See if he'd like something there. We can, assuming we don't have all the wall space taken up in the mechanical room, I'm sure we can make that work.
Are you going to do anything to the signage on the west side of the building so that as you come off of 36 up Warrior Way? Again, that's, looked really nice from the south, but I think most people are going to be entering from the north, aren't they, to come into the campus?
Right there.
Yeah, so where we say directional signage, that's meant to be an improvement. So if you're one or two visitors coming in, you probably do come in here and park and then make your way to the front door. If it's a bigger amount, this parking lot won't support that, so then, you know, even if this lot is not built, you're probably still parking somewhere south and walking up. But yeah, this note is the intention of doing something else there to help make it obvious and direct people.
I was just thinking, in that grassy area, just above the word directional, is there something there that's going, as you drive up, that announces that you are arrived at Dandell Campus?
Yeah, there certainly could be, absolutely, yeah.
To me, that seems to be a statement point as you drive into the campus. Otherwise, a person kind of drives in and they have to either get to that parking lot or park and then walk up in front of the south side of the building before they really get the, have arrived at where your campus.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's a great idea. You have to sign out of the highway. If you had something else there that kind of grabbed you and caught your attention.
I just.
See the high school, then you have, you know, another one here right in front of this building. Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Well, I understand it's a great idea, but you haven't priced that in anywhere yet.
We can work it in and maybe it's an alternate. But yes, we could certainly work it in.
It could be as simple as what you've got around the telephone pole too, just those ground.
Yeah, yeah, if it's, if it's.
Talked on the ground, landscaping, I mean, would be a right.
There are plans, you have something because it says directional signage, right?
Yeah, we were, we were thinking something more of, not, less monument sign and more just directional, like a panel sign, but it could certainly be that and then maybe you wouldn't need the other one. No, that's a good idea, yeah, we can, we can kind of work that in and see where it goes.
Had you considered doing the building addition out to the west to where you could make it so that away when people are coming in off of Warrior Way that it's just, that's the presence they see versus the whole building, that you kind of have to find your way around to get to the new entrance on like the complete opposite side of the building? Had you considered that? Was there things that made that a deterrent?
Parking is one of them. The real issue is where do you put the big boardroom? Because you're not going to go through that with a corridor in the future, because that's the boardroom. So that, that's why it's on an end of the building. Could it be west? Maybe. If you look at the size of that addition, it might just fit and just squeeze in there, but then what that forces us to do is either, then we're definitely building a parking lot, or you're definitely going to be walking from the high school, one of the two.
Okay.
So there's a bit of a trade there. Is it possible? Might be, might be possible.
But why would we tear a perfectly good parking lot to have to create another parking lot? I don't know, therapy. How does it seem cost effective?
Yeah, you're building on one to lose parking to then either, yeah, you were forced to then recreate it or walking further from the high school. There is a second point. We had talked, so there's one unaccounted for office in the new design and extra. We talked about the need in the future for maybe a few more. And like I said, we're not going to go through the boardroom, so we do have a design that extends a small addition out to the west to account for just office space in the future if you need a few more offices. So that was, there is a consideration for, you know, in the future, what you might be able to do with the building. But having the boardroom here, I mean, very likely you would, would not choose to cut through that space in the future for an office addition.
I'm going to redirect my next question to Dr. Schaefer. We talked about it, I think maybe the retreat or Board Goals Meeting, but why couldn't we do more meetings in the auditorium at the high school?
Meetings in auditorium at the high school? Well, you can, it's just, it's kind of like having meetings in here as we get busier and more robust, particularly auditorium, it's used in the evenings. So you'd be working around different schedules and things like that. I mean, can you potentially? Yes. Is that setting ideal? No.
Have you compared the cost of that to what the cost of just the boardroom is going to be?
Yeah, well, part of the reasoning too is we need training space. This space is going to eventually go away, so by having a separate boardroom, you also provide that training space and an offsite space. One of the challenges we have now with using this as training space, which is, it's a great space, is getting people up here, because if they're adults coming from other buildings or even outside the district, we're bringing them up through students to get to this space. So having an offsite dedicated facility for that, just, it makes a lot of sense. And you're not conflicting with student program and other things like that going on.
Okay. So my next question is, what title positions are not in your building right now that you foresee wanting to bring over to use those six new offices?
Yeah, Corey, help me out here. What we've done is looked at, in this building, we've done sort of a capacity audit in the building, looking at space, because we have tucked several people in this building into spaces that need to become classroom spaces in the foreseeable future. That would be food service, some folks there, special education to free up more office space downstairs, technology, trying to think what else.
I think technology's already in, director of technology's already in your office.
We do, but if we need to move anybody else, I know Rhonda's in this building, although we don't want to take her, Claire, out of the building, so she may stay here in a smaller space that's not a classroom.
Yeah, food service, special ed, that's four people right there with, between those two departments.
Yeah.
And then Rhonda's the database specialist would potentially come over to that building as well.
And then we would have a couple of offices, one office and then one, to begin with, one small conference space that could become an office in the future to also allow some future growth capability, so that you're not confined just in what you built. You've got a little bit, not, not too much extra, but a little bit of extra in the future for the district to fill a couple more spots without having to add on or do something like that.
My next question is, in your comments here, for the executive comment for us, you mentioned that you've, in the scope of this project, you've trimmed it down like $2 million. Was it the original master campus plan when it was released, talking about the renovations, the administrative office only being about 3.5 million?
That's what we hoped at that time. It is. If you remember when we sold the GO bond for this, we cut 300,000 out of it at that point. And then we started getting estimates, you know, on this cost and, you know, it's, it's surprising just what things cost to build today. So we cut, I think we cut, hard cut another $500,000 out of that. And then you can see there's remaining $2 million in alternates, because again, our focus is to get the additional space that we're going to need and then as budget allows to go back and renovate as Adam described and hopefully add the parking lot as well, depending on what that budget allows us to do. We have X amount of money to accomplish what we need to accomplish and we're going to do the most that we can there in terms of providing that facility, knowing we may not be able to do all of those things.
What was that X amount of money that you had to accomplish?
The, yeah. The GO bond was about, like a total GO was about 4.5.
4, 5, 4, 8.
But we don't, we also don't want to spend all the GO bond on the project either, so.
But if we're at 3.8, that's only a difference of 1 million.
But it's, it's an estimate. And the other thing we did to try to save costs is we're hard bidding the project.
You could maybe come and be more competitive this way.
Yep. So we're hoping to drive that, that cost down. And again, we will do, you know, within the budget we've set, we will do what we can here, but our, again, our prime objective is to do the building addition and then what that which is in the base bid, which is a generator, some little bit of additional parking and sidewalking, that's our, that's our base bid. If we can do more, if we can renovate more through the building, that's great. And if we can add parking, that's great too, but I can, I can tell you, for example, my office is in the old building, will remain in the old building, it doesn't get changed, I lose a window in the process. This is really about getting, getting that new addition built, so we can have board meetings, have training, have additional office space to move people out of this building to allow for growth here.
Will this become classrooms?
This will, but I think it will eventually go back to two classrooms, yes. We're just looking at that today. We have essentially eight classrooms remaining here, including two, counting this as two, that aren't already utilized, well, it's all utilized to some degree, but aren't utilized for full class space right now.
So 115 million original master campus plan includes the cost end of putting this back into how many classrooms?
Um, no. I mean, it, it would not, it would be putting a, putting a wall.
Where's that, where's that get paid for from?
We'll have to figure it out.
Operations or?
Uh, could be, for something like that, we could probably use some GO dollars that we have. It wouldn't be a huge cost to put that, I mean, we, we took it out, I mean, we converted this from classroom space to this space without any large cost. I think we'd put it back without any large cost. It's basically putting a, putting a wall in.
And offices downstairs, those get converted back into classrooms, so you got to take interior walls down, down there too and?
No, what we, what's happening is we have personnel in classroom spaces, so it'd just be moving the personnel and their equipment out and then utilizing those classroom spaces.
So the special ed area offices still remain offices?
Those would still remain offices. But as this building grows, there's going to be additional needs there for space too, because what happens is some of those become small meeting spaces and things like that that may be needed for instruction. We're, we're doing that in a lot of buildings now.
Seems to me that the additional parking would be pretty worthwhile if we can swing it, just because sporting events, graduation, I mean, there's a lot of times where we've just got people parking in the mud.
Well, even board meetings alone, we have students of the month, student accommodations.
If the big sphere out, that would be doable.
Renovating the old office, is that in the 3.8 or no?
No.
That was a 1.5.
That's the, that was 1.5 alternate. That'd be the first one you'd leave if you.
Creating this office, which is the current conference room there, because we have to because of the hallway.
Yep.
So that, that is in the base bid with the rest of the addition and there'll be a series of alternates here, kind of, so again, so you can maybe pick and choose on bid day what's the highest priority. Maybe it is the parking lot, maybe it's the windows and the roof, you know, to try to get the best bang for your buck.
Yep.
Yep.
Trying to figure out, looking at this blueprint on how we could get Herbert into a smaller office.
Clumsy, something small.
He's a pretty small one already.
He's got 18 years in there now.
It takes up the whole wall.
The one, the one thing we were pleased with is we spaced this out a little bit because of the configuration of the boardroom. It allows us to put a permanent spot in, so we're not moving desks and sound system and all those kinds of things. But the other thing is we can actually seat, I think, 52 to 56 people for a training. We're pretty much limited here to about 50. Just, it's the difference in the configuration of the room, so that would be really helpful and really helpful to reducing traffic in and out of buildings too for that purpose.
On the IT side of it, is this going to help, you know, a lot of times maybe we lose video or sound. I'm assuming it has something to do with this, this room, building it over there, you're going to have some newer technology for that as far as getting it live streamed.
Yeah, the hope would be, the fact that this serves so many purposes, the hope would be that, like Dr. Schaefer mentioned, the stuff that's in place, we would be able to get something new. The equipment that we are using right now streaming this meeting is very budget oriented and something that we could put in now would probably be a more robust solution.
Is there storage for like tables and chairs, like if you're going to convert the boardroom into a training, you would have?
Yeah, so this, this storage room on the corner I mentioned, it does have a little tech rack to help, but besides that, it's just storage. And then we're going to engage a furniture vendor to help lay out a specific furniture, but, you know, similar nesting type tables that can be stacked and put in as much as possible into that room. So I don't know that it can fit every table yet, but the goal is to get, clear out the boardroom for a, for a meeting and when it's training, easily get it back into the space.
As a general question, it's not that you have to do it, not that we need to consider, Dr. Schaefer, but the price per square foot for what you're doing of the new addition, noticing that you've got two little bump ends and then you've got one cutout corner down by the southeast side of the boardroom. Did you look at the cost analysis of just making it a square and using those spaces as additional spaces as to what you're going to spend on dealing with the angled roofs and all that kind of stuff?
Yeah, so part of it does have to do with the roof lines and where hips and gables and the ridges actually fall. That, that is one reason that this is a separate form and we do have this, it's a mechanical courtyard is what it is. There's equipment that sits there to the north, but the, but it does allow us to solve two things. It gives us a home for the equipment and helps us make the roof lines all work.
Okay.
So a big rectangle with nothing, you know, the roof eventually is going to get higher and higher. If we break it apart a little bit, we can kind of keep it controlled.
Okay.
But that's, that's the reason that's there.
So you're going to have mechanical stuff in there.
Correct. Does it, was this the other one?
Yeah, so there was the one with the mechanical, the one you just pointed at, and then the one on the other side of the vestibule.
Yeah, so the vestibule comes out of the building and that canopy that extends further comes out to grab you as an entrance, give you a little protection from weather and also help us with those roof lines. If this, if there was building on either side, I'd either have to make that canopy quite a bit taller, that vestibule roof quite a bit taller to give it that presence and make it work. I mean, not to say that there's not a way to do that, but we're also trying to avoid low slope roofs and keep this, you know, more of a professional office building. low slope roofs and keep this, you know, more of a professional office building. So yeah, there's a lot that went into that. I mean, from a pure dollars per square foot standpoint, every, you know, square foot you're adding on is 450-ish, you know, depending on what you're talking, but you know, some of those are easier moves than others.
Okay.
And we did, over time, we did some reconfiguration of the boardroom to try to bring that down, reduce that square footage, but still keep it large enough to function as it, as it needs to.
And the door on the east side of the boardroom goes out to just a five by five slab of cement?
It'll have to connect to a walk. It's an emergency exit. You have to have two points to get out of that boardroom and they have to be so far apart.
So you're going to have a walk coming back around to?
Yeah, it'll, it'll have to come back around and connect to another walk.
I don't remember seeing that in the.
You have to put that in a sidewalk form or can be, I'm sure you will.
Yeah, it'll, it'll be a sidewalk, yeah, yeah. The civil drawings didn't quite catch up with the architectural changes. So yeah, this will have to come out and I think the most cost effective way to do it would be to bring it back around and connect to the, to the walk that's at the front door.
And then will the existing service drive where the generator is right now, will that drive be extended back to connect where your other new mechanicals are on that north side?
We've thrown that around. So the serviceable equipment still needs to be serviceable. It doesn't mean it has to be an asphalt drive. Obviously, there's a cost to extend it there. We're going to remove the old generator, put a new one in at a different location. So yeah, that's kind of at play. I think a lot of that is maybe again with Richard preference on maintenance and then also balancing the cost obviously.
All right, any other questions? Thank you very much, Adam.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Schaefer, thank you for the, you're such a wishful words.
Yes.
Thanks everybody, have a great evening.
All right, next item on the agenda, treasurer's report, Mr. Herbert.
Approval.
Oh, sorry, I, my, I jumped. Thank you, Mrs. Long for pointing that out. All right, next item on the agenda, approval of the July 9th, 2025 regular meeting minutes. I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Ward.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Himsel. Comments or questions? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. All right, now it'll be Mr. Herbert's time with the treasurer's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Cherry. For our July fund balance, we had in our property and state tax supported funds was $8,938,074. We had educational fund expenditures of $1,933,614. We had debt service fund, actually had no expenditures in the month of July. And the operations fund had actual expenditures of $750,315. We transferred $215,000 from the education fund to the operations fund and that brings the corporation's total transfers for the year to 11.22 of the total education fund revenue and 12.05% of the total state tuition support. I would ask for the board's approval of our July financial report and happy to answer any questions.
All right, motion to approve the treasurer's report as submitted.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Ward. Comments or questions?
I have a question, I guess, for Mr. Herbert. Having gone back and looked at the report, treasurer's report, the last five years and thinking about our previous meeting, so over the last five years, when I look, the operations fund seems to have always spent more than typically in, well, that's even though we're attempting to make the cuts we talked about from our previous meeting down the road, will that change and become more of a, start to stay within the revenue it takes in or are we still going to see on the reports that it's still spending more than it takes in?
Yeah, I would say that's definitely a challenge. As you said, in the last five years, it's typically, that's been common. That's mainly because, yeah, the revenue that comes in does not support the expenses. That was well established back in 2019 when the state legislators kind of separated the different funds into the structure that they're in right now. That's why they allows for the transfer from the education fund to the operations fund. They know that the expenses incurred in there, yes, they're typically are not going to have revenue to support those. That's why we try to use that transfer to keep it balanced and try to keep it as near break even as possible. Obviously, with the discussions we've had previously, we know that revenues are going to continue to decrease, but we also know that as the, as that goes, we're going to also try our best to continue to reduce the expenses as possible, but we're also going to have to increase that transfer a little bit more. So yeah, the, the goal is to make it break even, but yes, it does, it will be a challenge. That's definitely for sure. But I will tell you, I mean, we cannot spend more than zero, so there will come a point when that has to be, the revenues are going to have to start outweighing the expenses and how we get there is going to be what we need to continue to focus on here over the next couple of years.
And I also noticed on the fund report, there's at least nine funds in there that have a negative sign next to them.
Mm-hmm.
Should we be concerned about that?
No. And I'll tell you why. Those are all reimbursable accounts, so we will get reimbursed for those and those will become positive balances.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right, any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, approval of claims, Mr. Herbert.
Thank you, Mrs. Cherry. We have our pre-written claims here for the month of $117,477.79 and we had our total claims of $842,813.21. Bring total claims and pre-writings for the month to $960,291. I would ask for the board's approval of our July claims and happy to answer any questions.
Motion to approve claims as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Ward. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Himsel. Comments or questions?
Got a question on the, one of you highlighted for us to look at the fields, turf grass?
Mm-hmm.
Turf grass management, what, what was that for?
That was for all of our athletic fields for the actual, what we call it, the real grass.
Okay.
Yeah, that's who takes care of the real grass.
The real grass, okay.
Yeah, so they do everything from the fertilizing to the mowing to the striping, specifically our soccer field, since we just moved over to the field right here next to the middle school. They take care of both of those fields for us. They were, they were in okay shape when we first transitioned over, but Fields has done an excellent job of getting those fields up to playable conditions. And again, just through the general fertilizing, they also take care of all of our sprinkler systems on all of our athletic fields and do the mowing and the striping. We looked into some of that stuff of trying to do it in-house, but you would think it wouldn't be as difficult to stripe a field as it really is, but to get it as precise as it needs to be, they actually have like a GPS robot that goes out and does that lining for us. And surprisingly, those are very expensive and so we found that it was more cost effective to pay them to do that than it was for us to kind of dig into that and do it ourselves.
Yeah, makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
I have two questions for you. What's a rider extractor?
That is a carpet cleaner. I probably could have put carpet cleaner, that's a little better explanation for it. But yeah, that's for all, actually that's actually two machines that it's kind of a, call it a carpet Zamboni.
And then remind me what the MS Verkata door access is?
So that was the door access system here at the middle school. So MS is middle school, Verkata is our door access system. So we're upgrading all of our door access systems. It just happened that with South and with the high school, it's being done through the project. But again, it's to get all of our security streamlined into one central location. As we act right now, we have two systems that are running, one being much older because we've had it for a lot longer time. And then with the Verkata system, that is actually tied into all of our cameras. That's also tied into our front office for when our visitors come and check in where they scan their IDs. That's all tied into the Verkata system. So it allows not only for our chief elephant to have access to the different varieties of security measures that he has, but also for all of our buildings to be able to see the cameras, to have controls over the doors. So that's also what program, we use those to program the doors so that when, you know, the community shows up for our meeting tonight, they're unlocked. It's, so that's what, yes, that's what that is.
Thank you.
Yep.
That's putting all of our buildings on the same system now.
We are getting there. We will not have North on that system until next summer when we go through and finish that upgrade. But right now, South is on that system. The middle school was just put on this summer. Half of the high school, as we're working through that construction project, is on there. And then the admin building, when we go through that project, it will be added on as well so that, yes, by the time we're done, which end of next summer, our entire district will be on one system.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, approval of payroll claims, Mr. Herbert.
Thank you, Mrs. Cherry. Three payroll claims here for the month. We had a July 18th claim of $682,392.83. We had our July 29th claim of $686,671.47 and our July 30th claim of $867.57. That brings our total payroll claims for the month of July to $10,369,931.87. So I would ask for the board's approval of our July payroll claims and happy to answer any questions.
I need a motion to approve the payroll claims as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Himsel. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is old business. I do not believe we have any old business, so moving right along to new business, consider approval of personnel recommendations, Dr. Schaefer.
Thank you, Mrs. Cherry. Recommend approval of the personnel report as we've submitted it. We have our, kind of our, I would say typical movement of new hires coming in here at the end of the summer and also recommending two additional days of pay for Mrs. Lacy who needed to work beyond contract this summer. And we are supplementing pay for our two EL teachers who have completed their certification or right in the final throes of that. And also our new ed psych, Angie Tucker. She's went through a three-year process that we had agreed to early on to help support her through and now bringing her pay into alignment with her peers here in the district of similar experience and degree status. So would recommend approval of the personnel report as submitted.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the personnel report as submitted.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Ward. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Comments or questions?
So if I understand correctly, with the days you're adding to Miss Lacy's contract, it's essentially taking her contract value, dividing by 225, multiplying that by two for the days, two days she worked in summer.
That's correct, yeah. It'd just be a daily rate for those two additional days.
Didn't that happen again last summer as well?
It, it has, it has, and we kind of look at, is it, is it a regular thing? If it, we see it being a regular thing, we bring it back when we renew contracts to extend that contract as needed, not just for her, but for anybody that would fall into. What we find is so much additional summer work and grant, the grant process pushes out into the summer a lot more than it used to, so it just becomes necessary for her. And sometimes we have students with special needs that are being serviced during the summer as well, that have to be overseen and contracts completed. So it's something we keep an eye on, but you know, she's, you know, worked the days and deserves to be paid for that.
Thank you.
As we look through this personnel report, we see we've lost three bus drivers. Do, do we have any idea on why they left?
Uh, we typically do when they leave and I can't tell you specifically. I, I think we probably knew at the time they left, why they left. Two of them, we were anticipating leaving, the third one left rather quickly, right before school started. I'm happy to say we have two new drivers in training. We have, I know, speaking with Mrs. Swanson, she'd received, I think, three additional applications as well beyond that, so we're, we're trying to train forward. But one thing we're finding this year is our neighbors around us are really being impacted as well by being short of drivers. And a couple districts here in the county that haven't really experienced that before is hearing too, one of the large schools on the north side was down several drivers here to begin the school year as well. So as, as you know, we have contracted some morning drivers with a company to help us through this critical period. I was actually speaking with the owner of that company today and he said he's having the same trouble as getting, getting drivers. So it's just something we're seeing everywhere when it comes to, you know, commercial drivers, they're just hard to find. I'm really pleased with our, our team this year. They've done an excellent job with the folks that we have. They're getting a lot covered, but drivers leave for various reasons. A lot of times it's schedule related for them, they find a different full-time job. It just varies quite a bit.
You know, you, you talk about industry wide, you're having this problem, this makes, you just kind of wonder and speculate on, well, what, what is it? Is it the discipline on the, on the buses that we're having trouble with the students and, you know, they can't discipline them and it just makes you wonder, I mean.
Yeah, I, I think that's certainly part of the equation.
How do we get ahead, you know, I'm sure you guys are breaking, how do you get ahead of that and do we need to maybe at some point implement a, you know, one strike and you're gone deal? I mean, if, if you don't act right on the bus, you don't get the ride.
Yeah.
And if that would help keep, retain drivers?
Yes, we, and we have tried to tighten things up. I would say that our students compared to a couple of years ago don't get as many opportunities to misbehave. They have to change their behavior a little quicker. But it's, it's a schedule I think is not quite as well suited for society today that it used to be where you're spending your morning and then midday and then spending your afternoon. This time of year can be pretty warm and it just doesn't suit it. And there are more requirements for the drivers, for the training and for their function, what they do. I think it's, I think it's all those things combined.
I guess my perspective is, is that we just need to make sure we don't go complacent with the idea that we're going to manage this problem. I think we still need to have the mindset, we're looking to solve the problem.
I'm wondering, Dr. Walker and Mr. Herbert, are we, do we have any holes in our teaching staff or have we filled all of those now that the school has started?
We have almost filled all of our teaching positions. We had, we had one remaining at the, at middle school when we started a full-time position, but I think they're sort of in talks and trying to work through licensing questions and things right now with the candidates, so I'm hoping that one will be full soon.
Okay. And our housekeeping and food service workers? Are we fully staffed?
Yeah, we are actually pretty well staffed right now. You have seen personal report over the last month or so, Mrs. Stumke has hired several folks in food service over the summer. A lot of those were replacements and I was to say that Mr. Land has done a great job with custodians and keeping them. You know, I think our challenge in that department is going to be like Dr. Schaefer had mentioned before, size of our buildings are starting to increase and with the budgetary pressures that we are seeing, trying to make sure that we are running that department as effectively and as efficiently as possible to make sure that we're maximizing what our individuals can do as from a cleaning standpoint, so.
Were we still contracting with a service for cleaning or we, did we end that?
We, we ended that a couple of years ago.
All right, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, consider approval of student handbook attendance policy, Dr. Walker.
Yes, thank you. So Senate Enrolled Act 42 required the Indiana Department of Education to do a few things. They asked them to establish guidance regarding chronic absenteeism, provide a categorization for excused absences and create a list of best practices to prevent chronic absenteeism. So following this guidance from ideally, each school corporation had to adjust its local policy to define excused and unexcused absences and ensure compliance with the new chronic absenteeism guidelines. I'd say if you look at the policy that's there in your executive content, the most notable change is the limitation on the number of undocumented parent call-in absences. So parents will have eight excused instances before each undocumented call-in after that would be considered unexcused. Students with notes from a professional will still be counted as excused absences. So this updated policy will replace the attendance section in each student handbook. So I'd ask for your approval of the student handbook attendance policy as presented.
Okay, we need a motion to approve the student handbook attendance policy as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Ward. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Himsel. Comments or questions?
This is the state's policy.
So the state gives some guidelines. They give us, they give us three now categories exempt, excused, unexcused. They give us some caveats on, once you hit ten unexcused absences, we have to sort of send that to the next level. There are some steps before that where we have to meet with families to talk through and form an attendance plan. And then we have to locally decide where we want to fit each type of absence in as an excused absence or an unexcused absence. So we kind of took the categories that we had before and fit them into these new three. The first one is exempt absences. Those are determined for us legally. And then we have to sort of determine after that what we would consider excused and what we consider unexcused.
When a parent calls in, that's not considered excused?
So that will be excused for the first eight times a parent calls in. After that, those will be unexcused. And so then you'd have to get to ten unexcused instances of that, so eighteen total times of a parent calling a child in before there's an attendance plan that we would put in place and sort of the next steps of the attendance policy.
In our last meeting, when we talked about the attendance policy,
Yeah.
that was, this is different.
This is different.
It's more defined and clear versus the old, the discussion we had at the last meeting.
Okay.
So two things there. Eight instances, a parent calling and saying, Morgan's not going to be in school today.
Correct.
That's anything else?
She's sick today. Yep.
But that's just it.
Yep.
And then, but no real action's going to be taken until a student has lost ten percent of the school year.
Yeah, so they have to get, we will start sending letters at five, so we'll send at five unexcused absences and then at eight and then at ten. Right, yes.
So there's plenty of room there then?
There's a lot of room, yeah.
At eighteen, you become a habitual or chronic absentee.
Okay. I was thinking you got the eight and then two more at ten, you were, but it's ten on top of that eight, so, thanks, you cleared it up.
Yep.
Thank you.
Parents can call in. Like if Carter was sick, but he wasn't sick enough to go to the doctor, you know, type of thing. I wouldn't have to take him to the doctor every time he didn't feel good, just to get excused.
Got you. That's what I wanted, yeah, that's what I wanted to make sure.
And that's, there's a lot, a lot of good conversation around this and a lot of us around that is, you know, we want our parents to know that they're valued and we respect, you know, them as parents and, you know, their ability and right to call their child in a reasonable amount of times. We had to strike a limit somewhere and after a lot of conversation, it was at eight and then the ten. But once, there's a process, you're working through all of that. So by the time you hit that eighteenth day, you are by definition a chronic absentee, which then those can get referred on to our other resources.
And then how much time does, for any absence, how much time does a student have to make up the work and get it turned in?
So that policy is normally as many days as you were absent. You have that many days to make up. So if you were absent one day, you have one day to make up things once you got back. If you're absent five days, you'd have five days to make up absent work once you returned.
And that is in the handbook, in the student handbook. I've referred to it multiple times.
Well, and it allows parents to say, my child's sick.
Yes.
We don't want to send them to school sick, right?
Yes, right.
So that's a good balance.
Up to eight times.
Eight times.
Then you gotta have a note. That verifies with Dr. Yagi at Semples.
Right.
We all know Dr. made those out of my toolbox.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, consider approval of the 2025-2026 non-resident transfer students, Dr. Walker.
Thank you. So at the June board meeting, we approved all non-resident transfer students who had applied before our June one deadline. By June first, non-resident transfer students can be approved in the order they apply as long as we have space available. Once we hit our capacities, additional students can be enrolled if there's space in the grade level. So the attached list contains additional students approved to enroll at this time. And I've also included a list of non-resident transfer students across the district, just so you can see some of those numbers. You'll notice in the color coding on the district sheet, there are some grade levels there that we have not hit our non-resident transfer capacity on, but because of the influx of students coming into that grade level at our current class sizes, we stopped our non-resident transfer enrollment. So we've got a few grade levels that are still open as students move in. If we have in-district students moving out or those numbers change, we could also, we could always sort of let students in. Currently, I only have one on a waitlist, and that's a current senior. Other than that, we were able to let all of our non-resident transfer students in who applied before this point. But we've sort of cut it off, knowing that we've, we've got an influx of in-district students coming in as well. So tonight, I recommend approval of the presented list, subject to our capacities for the 25-26 school year.
All right. Motion to... Motion to approve the 2025-2026 non-resident transfer students as submitted.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Himsel. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Comments or questions?
I have a question for you, Morgan. On that twelfth grade, we're listed as a negative one. Are you saying that person's on waiting list to get in, or we're actually saying that our total space is thirty, but we're taking thirty-one?
Yeah, so our space was thirty. We have taken thirty-one and we now have one on the waitlist. And that typically happens because we have in-district students who apply late. And so we've let new out-of-district students come in. And with returning students, we try to allow all students who are returning to come back. And so that one at the senior level was a timing issue. So that's why we went one over that capacity. I was checking with the high school, I say, hey, do you have room? Can we go one over? That was a returning student who has moved out, but we want to be able to obviously continue, especially for their senior year. The one on the waitlist is not in that thirty-one.
So again, this is just a question. So if that's the case and it sounds reasonable, why do we set limits?
Well, I think the limits help because before that, that June one deadline, it helps us know whether we need that lottery process in that order. It kind of, it helps to have that requirement, and it's also a state requirement that we have to turn in our capacities.
You see my perspective. You're asking me to approve something that's going over a limit that I agreed to.
Sure.
I just, again, it's...
But you, you may, that's a very fair statement. You may recall too, in our recommendations early in the year, we have capacities, but we still say that if we have space and rooms beyond that, we can take these. And this is a kind of unique situation. And our policy allows, if we have a student who completes the year here, who was an in-district person last year, but they move out of the district for their senior year, they can come back by state law and by policy. So what happened in the interim was, we hit our cap, but still wanted to allow, follow our policy and allow that student to come back and finish their school year here. So that, that's why that unique situation exists.
All right. Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, consider approval of the HRH contract, Dr. Schaefer.
Thank you, Mrs. Cherry. We're asking this evening to extend our current Hendrix Regional Hospital agreement for athletic training and also for our nursing services for an additional ten years. We have completed the twelve-year agreement and the service has been excellent. We've had good follow-up conversations with Hendrix Regional Health Leadership. And we have agreed upon a service agreement for nursing and for athletic training services. And they're very much in line with what we have enjoyed in terms of that service. So there are actually four documents there for your review. One is the overall master agreement, one is the sponsorship agreement, then you have the specific sports medicine services agreement, which is essentially for two athletic trainers. And then also to have the team doctor at our home large venue football games and then our nursing services agreement. And I would say since striking the original nursing services agreement here, I want to say it's been maybe four years ago now, time flies. It's, it's the best and most well-staffed. We've had our offices, our nursing offices filled in each building literally every day for our kids, which is a great service for our kids. And occasionally, sometimes a staff member may need to be seen by a nurse, but they've done a really good job of managing it. The service to our school community's been excellent. So I would wholeheartedly recommend that we continue or renew both of those agreements with HRH serving as our provider.
All right. I need a motion to approve the HRH contract as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Ward. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Questions or...
Nope.
Sorry, Mr. Bryant. I looked right at him. I apologize. Comments or questions?
Which fund is this paid for from? Which fund do we pay for this out of?
There's, well, the only cost is, we're not really paying anything, other than we do pay for, continue to pay for the salaries of the nurses, although HRH has taken over the hiring, supervision, training, all that. So we were paying our school nurses before, and so we, we pay that to HRH now instead of directly to the nurses.
How's that tie into the HRH fund on the reports, the fund report?
So that would be the donated dollars that are coming from HRH back to us.
So what do we spend that on?
I'm sorry?
What do we spend that on?
Right now, it's just setting in that, that account in our savings account.
That was...
Is it a proven interest?
Yes.
Yes. The original was to be spent back essentially on the football field, because that's what it was donated for at the time. And we will be doing that as we finish off the project. We'll be taking those dollars that have been accrued over the last twelve years and spending those on part of the project.
So I haven't noticed, looking back through that fund report too, that very rarely has any expenses.
Yeah.
But grows, continues to grow from year beginning to year end.
Correct. Yeah, that's just, we take the dollars that HRH gives us and we just put it into that fund and let it sit.
And we could see continuing with the new agreement, doing the same thing or possibly offsetting some of our operational costs for our nursing staff.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, school board policy review, Dr. Schaefer.
Thank you, Mrs. Cherry. We have several policies here as part of the board's commitment to reviewing existing policy. I wanted to start with the school board policy eighty-six-ten, transportation of non-resident transfer students. That was requested to be reviewed. And so I had sent the board some information. I think the board had asked for some early information on the number of walk zone students that we had. And I really appreciate Mrs. Swanson and her team pulling together some of those. We have approximately two-hundred-and-forty-eight walk zone students. And then the board had asked about how many potential non-resident students would we have? If you opened that up, how many would there be? I'd say right about a hundred. I think some of the, the numbers fluctuate a little bit, depending on whether they're going to childcare on a given week or whatever. So I think it was between ninety-six and a hundred and four, something like that. So we'll say about a hundred. Fifty-one of those hundred have a secondary address in the district. In other words, they live outside the district, but they may have a babysitter or grandma's or something in the district. We have twenty that are in Kensington, which is like right, you know, adjacent to where we're picking up our Danville students. There are ten to fifteen at Imagination Station, three to five at Green Acres Daycare, and then ten to fifteen at Sunshine. So that makes up the roughly one hundred, give or take a handful of kiddos. So that's, that's what we're looking at in terms of the number of students. I will share again, I know I shared earlier this evening, but our buses are very full right now. And even on the west side, where that bus or buses haven't been quite as full, we are running a longer route because we don't have a lot of drivers, so we're running a longer route, which then ultimately pretty well fills that bus or those buses. Takes longer to get them on there than it does going to the east side. But our capacity, we're at capacity. In fact, it was interesting, because I even spoke to one of our contracted drivers the other night, she says, she said, I've got about three, three to a seat in every seat. And that's, that's just the reality we're working through right now until we can get, you know, more drivers.
Comments?
If you want more, yeah, more conversation on that.
As we get more drivers, is this something we could revisit?
Oh, I, I think there's certainly always the capability of revisiting it, yes. I know I've listened to the board's comments, the want to, you know, possibly, you know, pick up some kids that would be in a situation to be picked up. Certainly makes sense. I've also heard, you know, from the board and saying that, hey, we'd like to be able to pick up our, our kids who are walking now is a priority as well. I want to be honest and say it's going to take a while to get there. It just is, because we also have the need, because of growth, to expand routing. So it's a, you know, it's a multi-layered process we're working through to try to expand routing where kids cannot walk to try to pick up the kids that are walking, because, you know, we'd like to make that commitment to our parents as well and then try to pick up any non-resident students that we may choose or within policy be able to do.
That was gonna be my comment too. In a perfect world, we get more drivers and more buses, and we do bring it back for discussion and all we can do right now, I think.
I, I don't have a desire to change it right now until we can pick up all of our in-district students. I mean, you know, as Christina has said in the past, you're asking littles to walk in the cold and the rain and until we can provide every one a bus in district that would like to have a bus. I mean, not everyone's going to ride. Some of them are going to choose to walk. I don't think I want to talk about picking up transfer students. While I love the fact that they think that we are a good enough school to come here outside of district, I do appreciate that fact that they think that much of us. I'm just not sure I want to tell our in-district parents that, we're sorry, we're not going to pick you up, but we're going to pick up non-district students.
Dr. Schaefer, in district, what areas of our district, in district currently don't have bus service?
It would be here pretty much in the, I'll say generally in the Clear Creek area here, or I should say here. And then over, just on the other side of Mackey, in that immediate area through there, up to, I think that runs a little over half a mile to the east. So, and that Berry Knoll diagonally to the gas station, if you want to think of it that way.
So in between, in between Mackey and Thirty-Nine South, which is Mill, South Cross Street.
Mackey and Thirty-Nine and Lincoln to Thirty-Six.
Lincoln to Thirty-Six, yes.
Okay. So if you go down Mill Street from the high school, all the way down to Thirty-Nine South, which is South Cross Street, is there any bus service in that area?
Most of that is our walking area. I don't think we go too much beyond that, because it does begin to get a little further than we want children to be able to walk.
I only ask because I live near the east end of that, and I do see buses turning up into Mill, Mill Street, going up into that area. So I'm just kind of wondering if something got added back in there, or if it's a special needs student that has something on their IP.
It could be, yeah. With, I'd have to research it to give you the exact answer, but I'd say generally though, that's where we originally drew that line. And we haven't changed anything, other than maybe a special exception, as you, as you spoke of.
Or it could be students going to North Elementary, because it would have them crossing Thirty-Six. They can't walk.
I don't know, I just, as I've noticed, buses turning in just seems to be counterintuitive to what I thought we were doing.
But you talk about Clear Creek being in the walk area. What about those students that go to North Elementary? Where do they get picked up at?
We, we have still bussed the North Elementary students. That was a change we made not long after we set the walk zone to, we do just a couple point pickups to pick up North students and get them over.
Only North students?
Yep. And that's, and we, talking to Mrs. Swanson here recently, another thing we're trying to do is figure out, is there, are there more ways we can be more efficient? You know, it, back in the day, you did almost door-to-door pickup, but, you know, that's just not feasible. So especially in the larger additions, we're trying to do just a couple of stops in there. So kids are walking a ways, even in those larger additions, to get to a bus stop rather than to a residence, which just helps to pick up our, speed up our bus times and get kids more quickly to and from home and school.
Yep.
So in summary, everything that's in the policy review there, you feel like is in order? And since we're not touching the transportation piece, those are all set and ready to go?
Yeah, I went through each. Hopefully you've had a chance to too, and there's nothing there that requires any change that I could see.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right. Next item on the agenda, school board policy updates.
Thank you, Mrs. Cherry. And these are here, I should have pointed this out in writing, but these are here really just for a first reading. There's no expectation to approve anything tonight, but just to take a look at what's there. So there's, a lot of this is guidance from Indiana School Board Association on the policy changes. The first of those is on board members' salary. This was a change made by the legislature. Board salary, it doesn't need to change. There's nothing you need to change or change your salary amount at this time. You could if you wanted to, but there's no requirement to do that. But the law now allows for the amount of the annual base compensation, which has been at two thousand dollars for a long time, to be as high as ten percent of what our basically lowest beginning teacher would make. Our base is fifty-two thousand, so doing the math, it could be fifty-two hundred. There's also a per diem amount for board members that's traditionally been there. That hasn't changed. That's based on what the Indiana Board of Commissioners, Indianapolis Board of Commissioners makes. And there's a per diem rate. I believe that's at a hundred and fifty for regular meetings and seventy-five for special meetings. Again, you don't need to change that. You can't change that part. That part is still the same as it was in statute. The base compensation could be changed. But what I noticed was, our policy doesn't really, we revisit this every year as we're supposed to, but our policy doesn't really speak to it or allow for those changes. Our policy simply says that a board member could participate in the health plan by paying the full amount of the premium. So what I'm suggesting, it certainly do what we'd like to do on it, is to just add in just a little bit of language as suggested by ISBA, that basically the board would annually determine the amount of salary and per diem each member receives for services performed as board members, not to exceed the limits established by Indiana law. Just add that, that language to it. Then we, we do our renewal meeting in January. We just have that in policy already.
If we decided we wanted to go with what we're allowed to make, then it would be, it would calculate back to the July first, correct?
That's a good question. Honestly, I don't know the answer to that. I would find out. Whether you can retro that back, certainly might be able to. So again... So again, I would check with ISBA on that and see.
It's like we did that last time when we got the meetings increased from up to 150 and 75.
I think we did.
Yeah. Again, I'd say, I would think so, but I would just want to confirm it.
So in the reality of it, if we did do that, and at the 10% of the base pay, that's really an increase of $3,200 for a board member. Is that correct?
Could be, yeah.
Could be? I mean, math is, 10% is.
You're saying 10, say that again.
We'll apparently get $2,000 a year.
Yeah.
And if it could be $5,200 a year.
32.
The difference between those is $3,200 for a board member.
If you chose to go to that full amount. And, well, here's another question, is if base teacher pay goes up this year, does that increase that a little bit? I mean, that would be another potential change.
Or do we? So you make that decision at that time, given the fact that the new language is coming out. And then down the road, as the board changes, they have to make the decision based upon, as the board changes in that year, that it changes.
Yes.
As to whether or not they, because the new teacher pay at that time is something different.
Right. Typically, by the January organizational meeting, we're going to know what that amount is. This is kind of a unique situation this year, because the law changed, you know, after you'd already put that in motion. So you could potentially make a change in it here, you know, mid-year, you don't have to wait till January. But that's why I wanted to get the policy in place and bring this information before you, so you would know and have a chance to think about it.
So if we did want to consider doing that, we could act on it in September?
Yes, I believe so.
Thank you.
The second one is on transfer students. As we bring in non-resident transfer students, there are some privileges in the law given. One of those is to a student, son or daughter, of a current employee. They get prioritized, if you have low capacity, they have, they get prioritized near the top of the list, be considered before others, because they're a son or daughter of an employee. What this law does is set minimum requirements of what an employee is. There's been some interesting situations across the state over the years, where districts might pay someone a few dollars to consider them an employee, so that they could bring their son or daughter in, sometimes for athletic or other types of purposes. So this is to sort of stop that. So now the state says to be an employee, you have to make at least $8,000 as a, you know, regular employee, or if you are an ECA-only employee, a coach, a sponsor, something like that, then you have to make at least $3,000. This is just adding this into policy. And then on the bullying, this goes into our student discipline rules. And the essential change here is that when a bullying accusation is made and school administration begins to investigate that, they're now required, so if somebody made a complaint to me as a building principal today, then by the end of the day tomorrow, I need to have contacted the alleged bullier and the alleged victim, and let them, give them a status update. Same thing when I conclude my investigation, I have until the day after I conclude that investigation to follow back up with both the victim and the aggressor in that situation. So that's, it's adding that requirement to our current student discipline policy.
That the students or the students' parents that you have to?
They would have to notify the parents.
Okay.
Yes, the parents. So those are the changes. Again, really for a first read tonight, we'll bring those back next month, and hopefully take a vote on those.
Okay.
And there are a few more policies that will be coming forth too. There's a couple changes that are just, you know, like used to, could not be able to transfer for athletic purposes, you now can. So we need to pull that policy back out and revisit it, and there's two or three like that. There's some changes made, we just need to go in and edit some things out of the existing policy.
Any other comments or thoughts? All right. Next item on the agenda, superintendent's report, Dr. Schaefer.
Thank you, Mrs. Cherry. Yeah, just a quick update, I left you some notes in your board packet, and wanted to update those a little bit. Our enrollment, this is unofficial, this is our literal seat count. As of Friday, we had a total of 2,894 students in class or had called in sick, I mean, they're here, which is up about 109 from our spring count in February, and up 123 from last fall. So from our official fall count last October 1st, up 123. We were up, last year we were up 150, you know, from the previous year, and we thought this year would be, we didn't think it'd be as strong as 150. I will tell you, it's probably a few more than I thought it might be. I think we were thinking it might be more 80, 80 to 90 students, so right now, we're a little more than that.
What was that number again?
Right now, the total number is 2,894, so just a tick short of 2,900. I will tell you, it changes daily, kids withdraw, kids enroll. What we have found, when we take these rough seat counts, is it's plus or minus in October, and when we get to October, it's usually right around that number. May not hold that way this year, but the last few years we've done this, it's been fairly accurate. So we'll see, because our official count will not be until October 1st. So, and that does not include developmental preschool, doesn't include Little Warrior, these are just K through, K through 12 kids. So, I talked a little, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I have a quick question on that. We had talked a while back, last year when we did our count, a very high percentage of those new students to the district were English as a second language students. Do we, have we run any numbers to see if that's going to be the same? And if so, are we prepared in that area, like as far as the amount of teachers and stuff that we need?
We are, we are still assessing English language learners, so we're getting close to 300 students, want to see how a few of them, how their final testing comes in. So we're running about 10% overall of our students with ELL needs. We did hire a third ELL teacher for this year, so we're able to divide and conquer that a little bit better, but it is something we're definitely going to have to continue to monitor as we move through time, because I think those needs, and looking around at other districts around us, they continue to climb, and I suspect ours will as well. We are officially 40 languages now, with right around 300 English language learners.
40 languages?
40 different languages in the district we're serving. Fortunately, our EL teachers don't have to be able to speak all of those languages, but they certainly need to give support, provide, and they've done an awesome job. They really have, really starting a program from scratch a couple of years ago and building it forward, and they've done a really nice job, as well as Mrs. Noe in helping to guide that. I talked about drivers a little bit, so I'm not going to rehash that, but construction is moving along well. You know, safety is of importance to us, a high importance to us. And our, the construction team this summer, and I can't remember if I shared that with the board, but they did a full, everybody, all-hands-on-deck safety training, reviewing this summer, as they headed back in, being, working around kids again. Always have to be extra careful and be mindful, and I've seen a lot of work, you know, not happening during the day now that was happening during the summer, just to make sure that we're, you know, not intruding upon instructional time and noise and things like that, and also just being safe in what we're running and doing around kids. South Mountain, as you know, is, other than some punchless things, is fully completed. We had a nice ribbon cutting ceremony, had a nice turnout for that. It was fun to see the kids cut the ribbon, which is, you know, it's their place, so that was, that was awesome. And programming continues to come along, and you know, as we grow and expand, we're going to be able to offer more and more for kids. We did, we were able to restaff our project Lead the Way pre-engineering program this summer. Mr. Harold was hired, who has some good experience in there, and I think going to take the program forward and do some really nice things there for our kids in that program. So overall, it's been a strong start back to the school year. And still, you know, working around the south drive and some fun things like that, but I will tell you, our buses were on time, even out this afternoon, on time out of the high school today. So they've got, got all the kinks worked out, at least most of them, from last week, and things are looking positive. So that's what I have.
I have a question for you, Dr. Schaefer, on your report, that kind of follows up last month. Again, I mentioned earlier tonight, just, has the communication been finalized as to what size meter we're putting in that transportation facility? Because between your weekly updates and the email that we got from the town manager, it sounds like from our July meeting that we're saving now off the 150,000, we've got that down 60,000-ish. But there's also the opportunity, depending on the final meter size, that could also increase to about a savings of 100,000. Has that been finalized and decided yet, or is that still in works?
Yes, I personally met with Mark Morgan a week ago, we worked through that. And I think, I think what the issue was, the drawing, all the time, the plans were four inch outside to three inch inside, three inch pipes, who therefore require a three inch meter. I think what happened, I'm not here to point fingers in either direction, but I think what happened, there was some misverbal communication, without maybe verifying on the documents right at the time. But it was planned for a three inch pipe and meter the whole time. I think because there was a four inch pipe, and they were probably talking about that, I think there was an assumption that it was a four inch meter that was needed, and it wasn't. So once they got the engineers and the town folks reviewing that, looking at it, I think everybody agrees, it's a three inch pipe, it's a three inch meter. I think there was a meeting to follow up with some of our folks and verify.
So that clears it up for me, but it brings up another question, is what calls, why do we need a three inch piping inside the building? I know we got a bus wash for the lower part, we stepped away from the full bus wash.
Yeah.
Why do we need three inch piping on the inside?
What I'm understanding is, when the engineers designed the building, that's what they designed it for. You've got your domestic water, you've got the bus wash, you've got, there are showers, there are larger restrooms, and just your normal domestic water use, and that's what it was designed for.
Showers in, I thought we only had bathrooms in there.
I think there's showers in there, yeah. There's shower facility in there, yes.
Just one shower facility?
Well, male, female, yes. So that's what it was designed for, capacity load, based on their specs, from engineering.
I just kind of wonder if you might want to go back and talk to those architects a little bit, and look at whether or not we can get by with two inch piping on the inside, and get down to the two inch meter where you can, but I don't know, it just seems like.
That's a lot of water, three inch line.
Yeah. It just seems like.
You could still have the three inch line, you could run a two inch meter and just, they're going to reduce it down, and save you some money that way too, and then add the meter later if you had to. It'd be worth asking those questions, I think, that maybe we should ask.
Yeah, I just think it's worth investigating it. You might be able to, again, you'd be saving up to another $40,000 in permitting stuff that just seems like we are overkill, that where you could change something out down the road, and I don't know if evaluation has been done of what you're saving by doing that now versus putting the smaller meter in, changing it out to a different meter down the road.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm not an engineer, so I really can't answer that.
Well, given that you're spending 40% of your time on the construction project, I'm asking you to look into that a little bit more.
Yeah, we could certainly ask the questions.
I think we have to get beyond the mindset that just because everything is within budget, doesn't mean we have to spend the money there. It's kind of like, if I budget to go on a family vacation, to spend $10,000, and on the last day, we still got $2,000 to spend, I don't know that I'm going to spend that $2,000, just because it's there, and we budgeted for it.
Yeah. That's a fair question.
I think we just.
We can ask.
Got to get, got to get beyond that concept that even though you budgeted for it, doesn't mean that we end up needing to spend it. My thoughts.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
I would just like to say, I don't know whose idea it was to let the seniors paint the parking spaces at the high school, but that was a fabulous idea, and if any of you have a chance to drive through there on a weekend, we have some very talented seniors.
They did a very nice job with it.
They did a very nice job, so.
I think, we'll give credit where credit's due, Mr. Owens, I think spearheaded a lot of that, helped champion for the kids, and do a really quality job of doing that. They had good specs, and the kids and the parents did a great job of putting those together and staying within the specs, and it came out looking good.
I would encourage you to drive through there on Sunday, when nobody's there, because they have done a fantastic job.
Are you saying you don't want to go there when the school's in session?
No, because I want you to be able to see the spaces.
I think that maybe our senior year, we painted ours.
I don't remember.
Well, I think.
I don't remember.
I've been in a long time since.
I didn't have a car when I was in high school, I'd drive too.
You walked uphill both ways?
You bet.
In the snow?
In ice too.
All right.
Without skates.
The next item is announcements. Let's see, we will have a Back to Soul Carnival on Friday, August 16th, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM at the Hendricks County Fairgrounds. Our next regular school board meeting will be Monday, September 8th, at 6:30 here in the Danville Middle School Training Room. The ISBA Fall Conference is September 15th and 16th at the Indiana Convention Center. If anyone's interested, please let Penny know so she can register you.